Good evening. Welcome to the Jefferson County Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, February 24th, 2025. If you'd please join us for the pledge.
... to the flag of the United States of America.
First up this evening are some student and staff recognitions. I know I got writer's cramp signing those certificates, so I think we have a few of them tonight.
Good evening, President Skinner, members of the board and Dr. Bishop. We do have a number of students this evening. This evening, we're going to recognize the JCS All County Middle School Choir. And I would like to go ahead and invite all of our middle school choir directors forward while we read the introduction. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the talented students who participated in the Third Annual All County Middle School Honor Choir. On January 31st, nearly 100 middle school choir students from across Jefferson County came together for a day of music and collaboration. Hosted by Jefferson High School Choral Director Hannah Myers, this event gave students the opportunity to refine their vocal skills, learn from new perspectives, and perform alongside peers who share their passion for music. Under the guidance of Ms. Myers and with piano accompaniment by Shepherdstown Middle Schools Kelly Bennett, students spent the day preparing for an evening concert that showcased their hard work and dedication. The experience also included special performances by high school vocal ensembles, inspiring these young musicians as they continue their musical journey. We'd like to thank the dedicated middle school choir directors. Kelly Bennett with Shepherdstown Middle School, Lindsay Dove, Charlestown Middle School, Haley Mira Harper's Ferry Middle School, and Molly Wildman Wildwood Middle School. For selecting and preparing these students for this special event, and of course, congratulations to our honor choir participants for their outstanding performance. First up, I would like to ask Ms. Dove to come read the students from Charlestown Middle School. I'm going to read the students. Please know that I have not met your students, and I'm really sorry what I do to their names. Deeply sorry. First, we have Ira Allen. As I call your name, please come forward if you're here. Eva Burns. Shabon Cummins. Annabelle Doitt. Ryland Goldbiowski. Lindsey Hale. Madison Hankins. Peyton Hillman. Estella Indomenico. Isabel Jackson. Kylie Jasper. Taylor Lafferty. Bryn Lykester. Madeline Moss. Brianna Marcus. Morgan Marshall. Emma Miller. Carly Nelson Ayala. Michael Parker. Colin Purvis. Sabrina Shepherd. Wilhelmina Stewart. Dante Tarango. Emery Willingham and Sophia Willingham. We will ask that all the students stay up front as we're going to take a group photo. Ms. Mira?
From Harper's Ferry Middle School, we have Blake Glover. Kiani Green. Kate Jackson. Colton Johnson. Adely Knight. Vivian McBean. Brylin Penwell. Karina Ruston. Henley Wagner. Mackenzie Coon. Kaylee Dignazio. Hayden Drummond. Jonathan Gutsman. Emily Hilgrin. Valerie Makabata. Charlie Nichols. Daphne Stephan. Hazel Turner Power. Danya Benitez. Megan Cannon. Adeline Graves. Claire Marrero. Ava Ranker. Ava Scott. And Leah Whitehurst.
I'm going to ask Ms. Bennett to come up to announce from Shepherdstown. These are the students that represented All County from Shepherdstown Middle. Clara Banura. Izzy Bales. Derek Burgess. Sam Correas. Gabby Kotrell. Kerrigan Kotrell. Ava Fields. Lizzie Gorsuch. Guadalupe Gutierrez Wilbur. Raylan Jennings. Ariana Johnson. Josie Matthews. Haylen Ricketts. Avery Ruland. Gino Santa Croce. Kayla Seibert. And Zoe Stanley. And now Wildwood Middle will be presenting.
From Wildwood Middle School. Jennifer Bush. Lucy Field. Haley Roby. Hope Wells. Savannah Phillips. Mackenzie Moore. Pearl Manaloyo. Abigail Alvarez. Juliana Beriantos. Salima Shin Moon. Sophie Holzberger. Andrea Castillo Augusto. Courtney Sampson. Riley Stone. Naveya Tanner. Teagan Enright. Brianna Wessel. Noah Rasmussen. Isaac Pineda. Kalen Antwi. Kayden Clyburn. Mackaya Yates. Janaya Lindsay. Mary Shiavi. Avalyn Everly. Anali Bush. Izaii Renteria. And Malia Yates.
Imagine if mail showed up?
Oh. Man, right there is where we were taking. I'm glad the little boy, both of those little boys made it.
I was thinking, hey, no.
Because they had their shirts on. And the one kid was getting ready to take off running up there. And his mother telling him to come back.
He's in the middle of a divorce. This week, his divorce system is finalized. Just, um.
Next this evening, we're going to continue with our staff recognitions of our all-star staff from each school. This evening, we have Principal Showen from Washington High School to recognize his two staff members professional in service.
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Bishop for having us here this evening. We're very fortunate at Washington High School to have some wonderful staff members, many wonderful staff members. And I'm very, I feel like I'm very fortunate to be the principal here. This evening, I have two staff members I'd like to recognize on the professional side of things, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper, she could come up here. I'm going to talk about her as you're up here. So Mr. Cooper is our vocal music teacher at WHS. He's been with us since 2010, which is when I started in this building. Since then, the program has grown every year. His groups have won numerous awards and are frequently invited to perform at prestigious venues and events throughout the United States. His hard work also puts a large number of students in state ensembles, which he's going to win this weekend, next week, right? Consistently has many representatives throughout the state represent our school. I worked closely with Mr. Cooper when I was a teacher in this building. In fact, our rooms were right next to one another for, what, about nine years, I guess? And I was always impressed with his work ethic, the knowledge of his subject area, and his ability to connect with students. He is definitely among the best of the teachers I've ever worked with. Outside of his department, Mr. Cooper is a team player willing to do whatever is necessary to help in the school. We certainly have been lucky to have him with us at WHS for the last 15 years. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Jimmy Pageant. Mr. Pageant serves as our head custodian here at WHS. He's been here since the school opened, I believe, correct? He takes a tremendous amount of pride in all he does, whether it be cleaning the cafeteria after lunches, plowing snow, which we've had a fair amount of that, helping with random tasks throughout the school day, or taking tickets at school events. If you come to school events, you probably see him out there. He always does a wonderful job. I know that if I ever have to ask Mr. Pageant to do something, he'll get it done. He likes to work behind the scenes, so I'm sure this is a... Don't merely like standing up here, do you? Yeah. But I felt that he, this is well deserved, and he does, this is a recognition that you need to be up here for. I remember when I first started my teaching career, I was told by veteran teachers and some of my college professors that while the principal is important to have the support of, you really need to get to know the custodians and have their support because they can really help you out. So I still tell new teachers that. The cooks, the cooks are good, too. So Mr. Pageant does a wonderful job every day and in the evening, and I just want to thank him for everything he does. He's a huge asset to WHS, so thank you.
Over to this side.
All right, next up, we have the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting held February 10th, 2025? Thank you, Ms. Bratton, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes from the regular board meeting held February 10th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments. And just a reminder that speakers are limited to three minutes, and speakers are prohibited from making negative or derogatory comments using a name or position by which an individual can be identified. Comments may not be threatening, profane, vulgar, or abusive, or the speaker will be required to cease his or her comments. First, we have Susan Hoover, followed by Karen Buck. Ms. Hoover, if you'd give me just a moment to get the timer up here.
Okay, ma'am. Good evening, board members, and Dr. Bishop, thank you for having me. The faculty senates of the school listed below, Washington High School, are writing to request that you consider adjusting the compensation for the athletic and school-based stipend positions using the following two-pronged approach: an immediate prorated adjustment based on inflation from July 1999 to July 2024, and two, the creation of a stipend committee with the goal of transitioning to equity-based stipends to be implemented in the 2025 to 2026 school year. As noted in the minutes from the Board of Education meeting held on March 13th, 2008, the Stipend Review Committee, which had been created with the need to formulate a policy which would make the stipends more equitable, presented their recommendations to the board. This policy was then put out for public review until April 10th, 2008. On April 3rd, 2008, the Board of Education met during a special session to discuss the stipend positions. According to the minutes from that meeting, it was reported that some stipends had not been changed since 1990, and others had not been changed since 1996. Then-President Pete Dougherty stated that the board needed to be fair and equitable, and the recommendation was made to have tiers based on years of experience. After revising the format of the policy and going back out for public review, the policy was approved at the meeting on May 8th, 2008. According to the minutes from that meeting, board members stated that the policy would be, quote, "a work in progress," unquote, and that it would, quote, "it will be reviewed every five years, less if necessary," unquote. Although there have been changes to the contracts for two stipend positions, the policy and compensation for other stipend positions have not changed since at least 2008. Although this policy was adopted in 2008, the stipend amounts were based on what people were receiving and were meant to make sure stipends were equitable. This does not mean that the stipends were raised for all positions. In fact, a teacher who was department chair, JHS, in 1999 earned a $3,000 stipend, which is the current amount for the position with any number of years of experience. In addition to the increased cost of living over the 25 years from 1999 to 2024, the responsibilities of many of these stipend positions have also increased. For example, in addition to traditional responsibilities of a department chair, current department chairs are dealing with an increase in class sizes and a decrease in certified teachers, among other challenges. Assisting long-term subs with curriculum, instructional practices, classroom management, planning, grading, attendance, et cetera, significantly adds to the workload of the department chair. According to the October report, there were no long-term substitutes in unfilled teacher positions at the high school level in 1999. Over the last decade, it has become common.
Ms. Hoover, thank you very much. Next up is Karen Buck.
Tell me when.
Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
My name's Karen Buck. I'm a grandparent of a Jefferson County public school student. Several months ago, I had a face-to-face conversation with a, let's call him a school VIP, and we briefly discussed the new changes coming from the Department of Education. And that person told me, we will fight it. And so, by order of the President of the United States, the United States Department of Education Office of Civil Rights sent a letter to schools in all 50 states instructing them to cease and desist all DEI activities or forfeit federal funding. The letter expressly forbids the use of covert means to hide school DEI activities, yet it appears that's exactly what you've done, using taxpayer dollars. The letter also instructs citizens and taxpayers how to file an official complaint, which I have done. And so, with taxpayer dollars in the main office of Jefferson County Public Schools, you had a department called, I hope I don't get muted for this, the Office of Cultural Unity and Equity. And there was a designated person running as coordinator. And so, with taxpayer dollars on or about last Thursday, the name of this department was changed to At-Promise Student Programs Title Six and Seven, but keeping the same coordinator. At-Promise Student Programs shares a commitment to equity and is simply a rebranded DEI program originating in California. With taxpayer dollars, this new department was formed without discernible board approval, without discernible public discussion or vote. It just appeared on your website. And so, the community is fully aware of these taxpayer-funded, illegal, possibly, actions. The community is also aware that it appears that you have willfully and knowingly violated your oaths of office, usurped your own board rules, violated the United States Constitution, defied a presidential order, and misappropriated tax dollar funds. We hope you understand the seriousness of these statements and pray you have the courage and the wisdom to correct your course. I also find it abhorrent that a local PTA is on Facebook begging for jump ropes and chalk while we are paying for illegal DEI activities with taxpayer dollars. Any sane person would call that disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
Good evening. I do not have any changes for the personnel actions that are presented to you this evening.
All right, is there a motion to approve the presented consent agenda? Thank you, Ms. Ogden, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion?
I have a question about the line 26.
Thank you.
I had a question about line 26, the supervisory special education aide. So we're creating that because of increased headcount or?
Yes, due to the IEP process that identified some additional supports, adult supports for.
Okay, I figured that's what it was, I just wanted to clarify. And I wanted to quickly take the opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Stevens for figuring out the fifth grade band situation and to the seven teachers who stepped up to take care of it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Ms. Lauren.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Deputy Superintendent of Operations update, the update on the new Shepherdstown construction.
Ms. White should be joining virtually.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. White, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, can you hear me well?
I can no longer hear you for some reason.
Mr. Bailey, I can hear her on my computer, but we can't hear her through the TV.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. You're good. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. If we can just share the screen again, that would be excellent. I want to update you this evening on the Shepherdstown Elementary Project. And hopefully, we'll begin soon with Slide 1. We have some interior and some exterior photos of Shepherdstown Elementary School. Again, we see the mascot with the colors here. I've added the colors so that we sort of acclimate to those. We have a honey and a really light blue. We're currently working on the design of the gym floor. That will have their mascot, which you see pictured here, and we're working on adding some verbiage around it so that it looks good on the gym floor. The gym floor, much like Ranson, will be light-colored. If you could advance the screen, please mark. Here's an overview of the site. You can see that they're pouring concrete in it. This is a nice view because it does show how much of the project is roofed. And I just want to remind people that they're working on this school with a different approach so that it is section by section. You can see the two rear areas. To the rear left, we have Wing C, and to the right, we have Wing D. Those are the classrooms. If you toured Ranson, those classroom wings are very similarly situated, just like the ones at Ranson. The front of the school looks just the same with the related arts in the foreground to the right encompassing art, music, and one steam lab with an open garden, which you'll see there to the front right of the school. The office suite is next to that with the gymnasium and then the dining hall and the cafeteria in behind that. Next slide. Here's another view of the front, and you can advance mark. Just shows the working and no snow during that time. Good overhead shot of the roofs. You can see the dining hall there. There's the front of the school, and I want to highlight this just because it shows the brick color. There is a contrasting darker color with it, which offsets it. It looks very sharp on the school. Next slide. Again, another aerial shot. Continue. Overhead again, looking toward the cafeteria. Pouring the concrete into that main hall that you see there. This is from the rear of the school. Mark, if you could continue on, please. There's the nice shot of the brick that shows the dark and the lighter color, and that is coming off the side of the school. Next, that's the steam lab. Continue. We'll look right here at the, at this shot, which is the gymnasium, and you can see the stage like Ranson you see from one side to the other. So, we have the cafeteria, the dining hall on one side with the gymnasium on the other. And the picture's tiny for me. I think we're looking at it gym size, so continue on. Here's the kitchen, very much like Ranson again. We see the rain showed. We'll have walk-ins in that kitchen. It's coming along nicely on the site. There've been a couple of weather days due to the winter we've had and the snow, but it is progressing nicely. Continue on. We're looking here, I think, inside the kitchen again. You'll have to pardon me. My pictures are really small at the top here. And then, we can see that halfway down the hall, the classroom space that's meant for the hallway, just like Ranson, that is in the round, and that illustrates where it is at in the construction process now. Another picture of that closer up. This is a classroom, and I want you to take a look at it. It has the reading nooks, just as does Ranson, and theirs are oval-shaped. So, while they look a little different, their intent is the same. It was created for kids, by kids. So, that is a space in the classroom that they can utilize, and inside that space, just like Ranson, they'll have USB ports so they can charge their Chromebooks or devices or whatever, and maybe enjoy a good book in there, as is appropriate. Anybody have any questions this evening?
Ms. White, you said that they were running a little bit behind because of the weather. Do you anticipate any issues with the opening in the fall?
Right now, they're still tracking at August 1st. At our meeting last week, that's what we discussed. So, August 1st is what they're tracking at right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mrs. White.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion and possible action on the 4,000 service personnel Neola policies.
Yes, tonight you have for consideration the 4,000 series policies, which are related to service personnel. They do mirror the policies, the 3,000 series, which you adopted last meeting, verbatim, with the exception of service versus professional. We did have these out for public comment over the last two weeks, and have received no comments to date.
All right. And so, what you're asking is for us to go ahead and adopt the 4,000 series, is that correct?
Yes, please.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Policy 4113, 4115, 4120, 4120.01, 4120.04, 4120.08, 4122, 4122.01, 4123, 4124.01, 4124.02, 4125, 4132, 4139.01, 4213, 4213.03, 4217, 4220, 4242, 4340, 4362, 4420, and 4531? Is there a motion to approve those policies? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twiford. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the 4,000 service personnel Neola policies, say aye. Oppose? All right, thank you. Next, we have discussion and possible action on Neola Policy 5111.01.
That's last month, or last meeting, I should say. You also had for consideration 5111.01, which is related to our homeless students. As part of that process, there was also the appeal documentation that was provided. Once again, that was posted for the past two weeks with no public comment, and the information in that particular policy was specifically from the federal guidelines, as Mr. Brown mentioned at the last meeting. I'm asking that this be approved this evening.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Policy Number 5111.01?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twiford. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 5111.01, say aye. Oppose? All right, thank you. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on balanced scorecard training. And this came about because, as a county, we received a letter from the Department of Ed, their Office of Accountability, referencing a board member who went on a radio talk show who had an incomplete understanding of the balanced scorecard. And also, they said that it was difficult to make a distinction of them as an individual versus a board member, even though they said they were speaking as an individual. When they're speaking about school and school policy, they're speaking as a board member. So, they have, in this letter that's attached, they have offered to go ahead and give our county some additional training on the balanced scorecard if we feel that we need it.
Yes. Basically, my conversations with Mrs. Kriner from the Department of Education, she offered training for board members. If you desire that training, that could be done. We just have to agree upon a mutually agreeable date in order to do that. And I'm just to let her know if that's something that you would choose to do.
Any comments or discussion?
Yeah. Why is this under unfinished business instead of new business?
That's just an oversight.
Yeah.
Should have been under new.
Yeah. I would like to speak about a few things. Number one, I called the, the radio show and my call to the State Board of Ed were two separate things. I called about a specific question. I had asked Dr. Bishop the same question, and he didn't know the answer to the question. When I called, and every time I've called for the past 10 years, I'm asked, "What county? What's your name? What county are you from?" Okay, you have to ask the Board at Jefferson County. So, I'm, I think this might help bring light to common concerns that parents might have when they try to get answers, that they are redirected back to the county Board Office, and then, not just parents, but employees, teachers. And then, they are, they go in a cycle where they end up not getting answers. So, that's just one concern. And when I was asked, "Do you want to leave your name?" No, I don't see the purpose in giving my name. I just have a simple question. Then, I'm directed to another person, and another person, maybe four to five different people. The person that finally spoke with me, she gave me some basic information, but my question was, and remains, why do schools report discipline for elementary and middle school and not, why isn't that showing up on the balanced scorecard? And whoever I spoke with said that that's not her department. She offered to take any questions in writing. I didn't have any more questions. I decided I would try to figure out who the department was, and that's when I went to Dr. Bishop and asked Dr. Bishop that question. Very separate from the radio show, I was asked if I would come and speak about a specific topic. They were talking about school discipline, and I said, "It's my opinion. I don't represent the Board. I've been teaching for over 35 years, and it's my personal belief that it is a disincentive to report discipline where school systems are getting scored." So, if the school system gets a 95% score on discipline, that looks like they are, they've got a good handle on discipline. So, you would want that number to be pretty high. So, it's from my perspective, and I might be wrong. And, you know, I said that. I might be wrong, but it appears that when schools are encouraged to have a lower number of referrals, then it's, it makes it a lot harder. So, that's the only question I have. If they don't have the answer in that department, then I don't see a point in doing the training personally, because the person I talked to doesn't know. I don't know. If anybody has an argument as to how it incentivizes school systems to give more referrals, if they know that they're going to show up somewhere on a scorecard, then I just don't understand that logic.
As was explained in the letter, school districts are incentivized for discipline proceedings that occur, consequences that are doled out because of violations of Policy 4373. So, my understanding of the process is that there is some incentive, if we want to call it that, to have a safe school environment. That's what was outlined in my conversation with Ms. Kriner and also in the letter that was received. So, there is some incentive to report those items and to have a consequence if it ensures a safer school environment.
Yeah, I understand that. But, any teacher that I've worked with when I was teaching here, and I spoke as a teacher, and I haven't just spoken, I taught in Jefferson County, I taught in other school districts, and employees, teachers are often encouraged to minimize the number of office referrals, and for whatever reason. And it's much more, it's much, when there is a score on the state scorecard that measures that number, the number of referrals, you want to keep that number high, that you've got 96% of your students who have never gotten in any trouble, and how you're not being, it's not an incentive for employees. And this comes back to what I keep asking. Why isn't it that our teachers, who, we have a state law now, it's signed into code, that teachers can have a student removed, and that they're supposed to be reporting this into WEVIS? And this has been almost a year, but the teachers I talked to don't know about it. They don't know that they have that power. So, this all came about because of my concerns with discipline. Now, there's, some schools have greatly improved. I don't know as much because I'm not in the schools, but when we have the LSIC meetings and there, you know, we see certain numbers, and some schools, they have more discipline problems. I just think that if teachers, number one, knew about the power that they have, if it was encouraged by administration, that might help, number one. Number two, with, you know, it's great that the state says, yes, you can, when students commit certain acts that you're allowed to discipline them, thanks for letting us know. That's wonderful. But, it doesn't change the fact that when you are measuring, really, the lack of referrals, when you're, when you get a high number for that, it's a whole lot easier to not give a referral so that you can get a high number there if you're lacking in academics, or if you're lacking in attendance, or anywhere else. So, I appreciate that this issue came up.
It's not the actual number of referrals that are measured. It's the out-of-school suspensions for Level 1 and 2 disciplines.
Sorry. I, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. But, the point is that it's, they are there. And when I was on the radio, I said, "I don't necessarily agree that you should suspend students," and I gave an example of a time when, you know, I begged the principal, "Don't suspend that child." The child was suspended anyway because I knew he would be out there, and he would get in worse trouble. And he was involved in a serious homicide. And if he'd have been in school, I'm not advocating for, you know, corporal punishment or, you know, more suspensions. I'm just saying, the simple common sense is, we're humans. And if we're measuring the number of, if it's reported, the number of suspensions, if people can see that on a scorecard, they're going to work to lower those numbers, whatever way they can, whether it's for a good reason or not. And maybe it is. And, I mean, I appreciate that everybody's not rushing to spank kids in school now. But, it's a simple comment, and it's, there's nothing, there's no ill will, or, you know, the way that this all got turned around as if I have done something horrible. Anyway.
Reducing pensions or reducing office referrals is always a goal, particularly suspensions. It doesn't necessarily mean, and I don't know if you were implying this or not, that there's something nefarious going that there's something nefarious going on and that people are reducing them without good cause. It is, now, if we have a situation where students are participating in certain activities that get them in trouble, we want to try to reduce that. Sometimes some of the things you put in place work and sometimes you have to go back to the drawing board. So, you know, the goal is to keep students in class.
I agree. And do you agree that, that that number?
Posting the number on the scorecard is a distance, could be seen as a disincentive to suspend students when necessary. If your goal is to minimize as much as possible the number of suspensions because you want that number to look good, it's a disincentive. And it's, it's not that I misinterpreted any rules or policies. I appreciate that they have the calculations on their website. I still don't know why they only do it for the K through eight or, yeah, and not nine through 12. I was just curious about it.
Dr. Bishop, I see two issues here. The first one is, you know, the balance scorecard. And obviously, we don't have a total grasp of the, the balance scorecard. And we're in the business of education and learning. And I, you know, I think if they're offering training, I don't think it would be a bad thing to turn that down. Maybe we can do it, you know, like an hour before the meeting, instead of having a totally separate meeting, you know, meet at 5:00 o'clock one Monday instead of trying to get everybody's schedules because I know everybody's schedules are pretty precious. The other issue I see is the fact that, you know, they're saying that there's a difficult to make a distinction between an individual and a board member. And we recently had training in December that reminded us that no matter what, we are always a board member. And the radio host in the radio interview, you know, made a comment that Dr. Joy is a frequent Facebook commenter on their Facebook page. And that was why they invited her to come speak on this issue. So we just have to remind ourselves that when we're out there, even though we say, you know, I'm not speaking for the board, you're still a board member. And we need to reiterate that lesson that we learned from Mr. Brown when he came in December and, you know, gave us that training. So we just all have to be very cognizant of the fact that no matter what, we're always a board member.
I comment on personal finance when they have a personal finance speaker. There was one particular comment that I made and it was about this topic of the discipline and the scorecard. And that it was my personal opinion. I said, I do not represent the board. I told the, the radio DJ, when he asked me if I would talk about it, I said, look, but I don't represent the board here. You have to make that clear. He said, she's not representing the board. And then I said it myself, that I'm not representing the board. But I am a teacher and I am a citizen. And, I mean, I, I don't know. To try to get to a good understanding, it's like I gave a positive view of, or impression of, or the word that I'm looking for. I said positive things about the organization, the State Department of Ed, that it is improving, that there is more accountability. And people asked, well, why would anybody not want you to discipline kids? And I gave the example, it's not always cut and dry. I, I just think that to try to muzzle anybody that's an elected official or a board member, that you can't have your own personal opinion, I don't agree with that. I understand that people have said, you know, you're, you're always a board member. But I didn't do anything disrespectful. I didn't say anything dishonest. And I made it very clear, just like the policy says, make sure that you say, you speak for yourself. So, I mean, I am very careful not to say anything about this board, but this was a general across the country. If, if you are asking schools to limit the number of referrals or suspensions, well, that's, you're going to, you know, suffer the consequences.
I do not think that this letter is chastising you. I think that they made it very clear. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure you understand. I think they made it very clear that they feel like you have an incomplete understanding of it, which you would agree with, that you don't understand how it works, that, that we don't understand how it works. Not something personal, but they're offering to help us all understand it better. And then separate from that, I don't get the impression that they're chastising you for what you spoke about, but just saying that there is a level of expertise that's implied. So they want to make sure that, again, you completely understand it so that when you do speak and make it clear that you're speaking on your own behalf, that as a board member still, that level of expertise goes with it. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with them suggesting that we all get better training on it. And I know you say that if they can't answer the questions and you're not interested in the training, but I think it would be beneficial to have that office here to answer those questions for you in person, for all of us.
Some of what you said, I heard you say that I'm not interested in the training. Is that what you said?
You literally just said you're not interested in the training if they don't have the answers. And you've already said that they don't have the answers. But I think it's still worth having them come and educate all of us. There's, there's nothing wrong with that. I think that their offer is a valid offer. And again, I, I understand that you feel like this is attacking you. But I, if you read it kind of without the personal feeling in it, really, you can just see that they're just saying it indicates there's an incomplete understanding. And I'm happy to be in that boat with you, with an incomplete understanding. I would be happy to learn more about it. But it's fair to say that there's a level of expertise that's implied as a board member, as a teacher for 30 years, as a citizen of this county. And if we don't have that understanding, then why not take them up on their offer?
I'm not arguing against the training. I'm just saying it would be nice if, if they came and were able to answer some questions. And I don't know, maybe by then, Dr. Bishop will have the answer.
Sorry, I was writing on.
You were going to look into that question.
Yeah.
So I think we're at the point where.
I'll reach out tomorrow. If that's what you choose to do.
Right, let's go ahead and just take a, a quick vote on it. Is there a motion to reach out to the Department of Ed and accept their offer of balance scorecard training? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the Department of Ed's offer on balance scorecard training, say aye. Oppose? All right, there you go, Dr. Bishop, there's your answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up are board member comments and committee reports. Ms. Twyford?
Thank you very much. So I had a couple of things that I wanted to go over. I wanted to first take the opportunity to thank Ms. Juracek and her AP Biology class for inviting me to her data collection recently this week. It was fantastic. We went and we tried a bunch of different foods and then took, I don't want to say a medicine, but took a supplement that would then change the way those things taste. And we collected data for their class. It's an ongoing thing. But not only was I able to experience that with her class, but I also got to learn a lot about some of their other field trips and just really see biology come alive for these kids. And that was a lot of fun. So I appreciate the invite and I had a great time. So thank you very much for that. I wanted to ask Dr. Bishop if at some point we could do a full security review or maybe you already have one of just the schools in general. Check you out. All right. Great minds think alike. Okay, so thank you. As that is in my wheelhouse, if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know. And then the last thing I had was a great announcement. So two weeks ago, we learned that the Washington High School Jazz Ensemble was named the 2025 State Honored Jazz Band. And another congratulations goes out to the Washington High School Wind Ensemble for also being named a state honor band for the West Virginia Music Educators Association. So they will perform at the State Music Conference in Charleston on Friday, March 7. Congratulations to Ms. Hazlitt, the Jazz Ensemble and the Wind Ensemble for earning two state titles in the same year. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Mrs. Ogden? All right, Ms. Bratton?
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to make the announcement that the Jefferson County Parks and Rec Commission, they're planning to hold a bingo fundraiser for the fire events on, on May the 4th. And they're looking for donations of items or baskets that they can raffle off at that event. Also, I would like to congratulate, congratulate our Charleston Middle School girls team, the varsity team, they won basketball. I'm sorry, I don't know what I said, but Charleston Middle School Basketball Team, the girls, they won the MAC championship. So congratulations.
Dr. Joy?
I attended the Parks and Rec meeting this past week. And let's see, they're, they're trying to get everything ready for opening in the spring. They have started booking for the concerts. And if anybody has a, a band or a performer that they're interested in, contact Jennifer to see about getting them booked. They're 63% at capacity for their preschool and 19% capacity for the camp. It's full. So there's still room. They are looking for donations, sponsorships for the fireworks and also for the May 4 fundraiser in Midway. There is an Earth Day artwork contest for preschool through 12th graders being held by the Shepherdstown Community Club. And that's on West German Street, North German Street in Shepherdstown. May 10, there's a color run at Sam Michaels Park. And you can find out details from the, at Sam Michaels Park. February 26, 3 to 9, Shepherdstown Elementary Spirit Night. 15% of sales will be donated to Maria's Taqueria. March 20, at 6:00 PM, Shepherdstown Cross Country Team will hold a, a running clinic for elementary school students. March 1st begins Women's History Month. And the Holy Month of Ramadan begins this weekend as well. And I think that's everything.
I'm sorry, if I could just announce one more thing. In our community, they're kicking off Black Children's Book Week by providing an opportunity for black children within our community to be featured in an upcoming book called Voices of Tomorrow, Young Black Leaders in the Making. This is a book that will showcase the incredible potential of black children ages 8 to 13. Just wanted to make sure that that was announced for Black History Month. Thank you.
Dr. Bishop, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a few. A calendar update, we've now used 10 days. So we've used our fifth NTID. So from this point forward, we're in the makeup stage.
But that's okay because spring is here.
It looks like, for today at least, we were out of the, out of the danger of any snowfall. We've actually dodged the last two pretty well, thank goodness.
For clarity, just to let the public know, if we have another day that's called off, there's no school of any kind, it will just be made up.
That is correct. So if we, if we miss day 11, there's no NTID, there's no asynchronous learning. It's just a snow day. But that day would then go to March the 10th. And then the second makeup day we've already announced would be April 21st, which is commonly referred to as Easter Monday. March 11, you had voted a couple of meetings ago to adjust some meeting dates. March 11, we will meet at the central office for the board meeting. That evening, there is a commission, a county commission meeting here, a town hall. So we will meet at the central office. And I'll send you some updates to make sure that you stay in the loop with that. LSIC meetings reconvene next week, 5:30. Ms. Hoover spoke early, earlier about the letter from the Washington High School Faculty Senate. I spoke with her today about this prior to her coming to speak this evening. You know, some of these stipends have not been revisited for some time. Athletic stipends did change a few years ago. There was $500 added, just a flat $500 added to the athletic stipends. But I do think it is something that, that should be revisited and taken, we should take a look at it. For some of those to not have been changed since the 1990s is pretty ridiculous, actually. So we'll look at the stipend committee. Anytime you put a committee like that together, you want to make sure that you have that, hit that sweet spot of the number of participants. So we'll work on that moving forward. To Ms. Twyford's point about the safety and security checks, we are pleased to have Mr. Caesar, Jeff Caesar, a retired FBI agent, is our safety and security officer. And he is actually doing, in the midst of doing building audits now. He will be going through each building in the district and doing a security audit in those buildings. And he hopes to be able to do one of those per quarter so that we can stay on top of security needs in the district. So we're really fortunate to have Jeff as part of our team. And that's all I have for this evening.
When, when are the LSIC meetings?
The next batch, the next four is March 3rd, so next Monday. Yes, and I'll send you the, the schedule this week, just to remind you. But next Monday is the next set at 5:30.
Thank you.
All right. And then we have an executive session this evening. Do we have it on personnel?
Yes, we'll have one personnel and then the discussion of real property as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel via Code, West Virginia Code 6-9A-4B2 and discussion of real estate according to West Virginia Code 6-9A-4B9? Thank you, Ms. Bratton, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. And Dr. Bishop, do you anticipate action?
Action on the first, on the personnel only.
Okay. All right, all in favor of going to executive session, say aye. Oppose? All right, thank you very much.
All right, is there a motion to return to open session? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Breton. All in favor of returning to open session? Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Lisa Cole at Jefferson High School effective 2/24/25? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Breton. All in favor of the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Lisa Cole at Jefferson High School effective 2/24/25, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. 7:42, meeting adjourned.